It's called an order, the Township of Ocean Planning Board Regular Meeting, July twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Claire, can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
How to say?
Dufelia.
I'm sorry. Fisher?
Here.
Weinstein?
Here.
Deal? Bad- Bad- Badnovich?
Badnovich, here.
Ivanadero?
Here.
Me?
Here.
I believe that's it, right? Here's the, here's the Stella.
Stella Close is here.
The city was impossible.
Does this make it to the old road again?
No, it's up in New York.
You want us to stand up or?
Anyway, it's not gonna. Sorry.
Stella Close is here. Right, okay. Uh, let's salute to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of requirements for the open public meeting. Law for this meeting has been satisfied, a copy of the notice has been sent to Asbury Park Press and the Coaster, and filed in the office of the township clerk on July first, twenty twenty three. There's emergency exits through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. There's no smoking. Board policy, no new cases will be started after ten thirty P M., no new testimony taken after eleven P M. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean Community Cable Channel, channel twenty-two on Verizon Files, and channel seventy-seven on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off, you need to make a call, do it outside the meeting room. Alright, resolution memorialization, thirty-five hundred Sunset LLC, block one seventy-six, lot three and four, thirty-five hundred Sunset Avenue, Ocean, minor site plan approval.
I'll make that motion.
I second, I don't, was?
You weren't here.
I wasn't here, right?
Yeah, I didn't think so.
I'll second.
And only those members who were at the last meeting can vote on this.
Were you here?
I was here.
Were you here? I was there.
You need me to second or second?
I second.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that should be a roll call, and anyone who was not at the last meeting can abstain.
Dufelia?
Yes.
Ducey? Fisher?
Yes. Oh, I'll abstain. Yes.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Uh, minutes for approval, December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And that can be an all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, reorganization, to swear in the members. How would you like to do this, Ron?
Do we have, who are the new members? I just need the, uh, the oaths.
Well.
You can just stand where you are and, and, uh, and I'll swear you in.
Does Dave have to be re-sworn in too?
Yeah. Dave, that's you too.
No, uh, coun- the councilman is, doesn't not have to be re-sworn in. He was sworn in, I assume, as a councilman, so.
I love a good swearing in.
It's up, it's up to you.
Come on. Why not?
Alright, so Mister, so Councilman Fisher does not need to be re-sworn.
Okay.
Um. Just Miss, just Mister Beal? No, he's not here. Alright. Alright, we're gonna, just repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Jack Mamie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemn, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments asap.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
And under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the position.
Position.
Alternate number two member of the planning board.
Alternate number two member of the planning board.
Of the Township of Ocean.
Of the Township of Ocean.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And I just need him to sign this, yeah. Doesn't look good swearing in.
We're electing chairman, vice chair.
I'll make a motion for, uh, to elect, uh, Dr. Di Benedetto as a chairperson.
I'll second.
Roll call? Are we do all in favor or?
Now that should be a roll call.
Who does it?
You abstaining?
Yes.
Exception.
Fisher?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Sure, I mean, yes. Yes.
Can I elect myself?
Yeah, you vote for yourself, sure. You could break, you could have broken the tie.
Yes.
Uh, vice chairman, I make a motion for Jeff Weinstein.
Guys, all in favor?
I'll second.
Dufelia?
Fisher?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Sure. Yes.
Bonavich?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
We need to approve the meeting dates for the upcoming year.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, we recommend that there are two amendments to that resolution. The September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three date should be amended to September eighteenth, and the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four date should be amended to April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
I thought we were gonna keep that on the eighteenth and see what happens.
No, we're gonna go to the eleventh.
Whatever you say.
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
Okay.
Okay. And we're just gonna say, we all agree.
Uh, you, you, there still needs to be a motion to adopt the resolution.
Alright, we.
I second, and then it can be all in favor.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion.
I second, whatever Ron said. Cause he's always wrong.
And that can be an all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Appoint planning board attorney. Do we have to make a motion for Mark?
Yeah, make a motion.
You're the only one here.
You still have to make a motion, you have to second it.
Alright, I make a motion for Mark Lextein.
I'll second.
Bonavich.
Okay. And that's gotta be a roll call too.
Okay.
Dufelia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Bonavich?
Yes.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate, uh, stopping to me.
And all amendments are subject to certification by R C M F O, for promise.
Okay. Let the record stand. Board planner, Jim Higgins. I make a motion for Jim Higgins.
Second.
Dufelia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Bonavich?
Yes.
Ivanadero?
Yes.
Yes.
And, uh, make a motion, do we, are we, we're electing not?
C M E.
C M E, right, engineering. Can we say Bennett Matlock also? Okay. We don't want them to send someone else, Bennett.
Well, I appreciate that.
I make a motion for C M E, engineering, Bennett Matlock.
I'll second.
Dufelia.
Dufelia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Bonavich?
Yes.
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 Uh, point, planning board, uh, secretary, Claire. Uh, Claire, you're, what's Claire's last name?
Villanova.
Villanova?
Like in college, but like.
Yes. Nice.
Nice.
Great. I make a motion for Claire Villanova.
Second.
Dufelia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Bonavich?
Yes.
Ivanadero?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, the professionals are gonna get sworn in now?
I think we're.
Yeah, we're good, we, we signed the oaths.
So, we don't have to swear, are you in?
It's been sworn.
The swearing's been done.
Okay.
Alright.
Uh, case carried to August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, be held in the public meeting room, Minnesota Building, Deal and Monmouth Roads, Oakhurst, First French Speaking Baptist Church, block thirty-eight, lot seventy-one and seventy-two, twenty-seven ninety-five dash twenty-seven ninety-seven, Asbury Avenue, Ocean. Okay. New case. One North.
But gentlemen, before you do that, is anyone here in French, on, on First French Speaking Baptist Church? No, alright, I just wanted to make sure no one was here.
It's being recorded though, right?
Yeah, so, so, so we should, we should note, uh, Mr. Chairman did say it was carried to August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. I will say this to anyone listening to the tape, when they eventually do come back, we can't guarantee it's gonna be on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, there's gonna have to be a new notice. So, uh, there will be new notice on that application before they actually come before the board.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you. One North Mall Center LLC, block one forty-one, lot seventeen, One North Mall, Center Drive, Ocean, Zone C dash five, this applicant is seeking conditional use, site plan approval for the existing building for a warehouse consistent with ordinance twenty-four oh one, with no site improvements proposed at this time. Ms. Krimko, welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Di Benedetto, members of the board, Jennifer Krimko from Anselm Firm and Aaron, on behalf of the applicant. By way of very brief summary before we get started, I understand that the ordinance was actually changed, um, specific for this particular lot, not spot zoning, but generally speaking, so this would be permitted to be warehouse. We had thought that that was the end of it, and unfortunately for us, your ordinance says that any conditional use, uh, needs to come before the board, even if no site changes are required, just to confirm that all the conditions are met. So we are here tonight simply to, uh, show you what's existing there today, and give testimony with regard to meeting of the conditions. What I can tell you is, is that in Jim's report, he had recommended that the landscaping be, uh, replanted, uh, back to what was originally approved, and it's my understanding that that's already been done in anticipation of the meeting, we met in tech review, we had an opportunity to, uh, pull the old approved landscape plan, and that's all been planted. And in Ben's letter, there was a recommendation that a grate on a drain be fixed, that was also done today, as well as the cleaning out of the basin. So, as it relates to their letters, those things that they asked to be done have already been done.
Okay. Jim, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll just summarize, I think Ms. Krimko basically explained the application. They do need a conditional use permit, and they need minor site plan approval. As far as the conditions go, there are two conditions for the warehouse use. One is that the site can't have frontage on New Jersey Route thirty-five or Sunset Avenue, and the second is that the building must be located a minimum of five hundred feet from New Jersey Route thirty-five and Sunset Avenue, it meets both of those conditions. My report says that no new, that no new variances are necessary.
I know.
And that's, there's a technical issue there, where they were previously granted a variance for a number of parking spaces. They're modifying that, actually making that their requirement as it stands now is for one hundred and thirty-eight spaces, they're reducing that, so the magnitude's being reduced, technically it is another variance, but it's an improvement.
Okay. Bennett?
Thank you. I, I would echo what Jim said about the parking, uh, I agree that the, while they, the site is underparked, it is less of a, uh, an underparked condition, uh, with the proposed, uh, uh, use. I would just ask that the applicant discuss, uh, traffic impacts, particularly for, uh, um, deliveries, because it's, it's becoming a mo- mostly warehouse use, uh, maybe just some discussion on, on how that's going to work, uh, and then, uh, adequacy of the existing site, uh, I, it was a previously approved site, um, but just for this use, uh, just some clarification on that.
Okay.
Thank you, and just to move some items into evidence, A one is the survey of property by Nelson Engineering, dated three twenty-one, twenty-three.
Yes, so, so Ms. Krimko's gonna, I was gonna do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay.
I forgot, it's been a while, I've been eating.
It, it's fine, um, so A one was a survey as indicated, A two is the conditional use site plan by Nelson Engineering dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. A three are the architectural plans by Phelps Collins Architecture dated, uh, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B one is the board engineer's report dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B two is the board planner's report dated July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. B three is the crime prevention officer's report dated July sixth, twenty twenty-three, and B four is the traffic safety officers, officers' report dated May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Does that cover everything?
Uh, yeah, just, we have a, as, as A four, just a color rendered version of the conditional use site plan.
Thank you.
Right, and if I could just introduce, uh, Dave Bash, have him sworn.
Sorry, are you swearing testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
And just state your name for the record?
David Bash, B O E S C H.
I'm sorry, B O C.
B O E.
B E S C H.
And Dave, you're testifying your capacity as project manager and vice president in Nelson Engineering?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
And you're, you're licensed engineer, correct?
No, he's not.
He's not, he's just the vice, he's just the vice president.
Correct.
Okay.
He's been testifying before this board and the zone.
Numerous times.
Okay.
Thank you.
Twenty plus years. So, Dave, with regard to what was stated by me at the beginning, and then the board's professionals, what you have depicted on A four is existing conditions, except for the new landscape planting and the changed grade, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what we are proposing is merely to get approval for what's existing for use for tenant B as a warehouse pursuant to the conditional use ordinance?
That is correct, being, being the north at, or closest to Sunset Avenue.
Okay, and tenant B used to be a warehouse and a bunch of things, and furniture.
Furniture warehouse before.
Sorry, a furniture warehouse before that. And, uh, when it was a, a furniture warehouse, it was actually the showroom in the front, and then a pretty large warehouse in the back.
That's correct.
So, in the proposed condition of warehouse, it will essentially operate the same way the previous users have, and that is always included in accessory warehouse.
That's correct.
It was just part of the overall retail, uh, capacity.
That's correct.
Okay, and in the current condition, as it was last used, the parking requirement is, uh, would be what under the ordinance?
The current condition would require one hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces. In the proposed condition, we'll be looking at a requirement of one hundred and seventeen.
Right, so there was a discrepancy between our architectural plan and Ben's letter, and it was whether or not the break room and bathrooms and everything, but considering we're so far under what the existing conformity is, we figure we'll just call it a office for safer analysis and ask for the hundred and seventy, is that correct?
That's correct.
As far as, from just generally speaking, having, uh, been involved from the beginning through now, is there any change to traffic flow, truck deliveries, loading, unloading, anything alike?
As I mentioned, uh, the initial approval was for a furniture warehouse and distribution center, and that was accommodated with this design. There are two separate loading areas, uh, one on the north side, um, off the, uh, the perpendicular loading spaces. And then one on the southeastern corner. Southeastern corner would accommodate the semi trailer trucks. The northern center would accommodate the single unit office trucks.
And for the goodwill and the hundred and thir- and the, um, analysis for a hundred and thirty-eight total parking spaces being required, that's because there's a retail component, an office component, and a warehouse component.
That's correct.
So in the event that the goodwill left the premises and the owner wanted to make that a full warehouse as well, invariably because there'd be less, there wouldn't be retail, the parking requirement would actually go down.
That is correct, officer.
So essentially, this entire building could be converted to warehouse, and as long as the office ratio to warehouse was such that it didn't increase the, uh, parking demand, we could maintain.
That's correct.
In the police department review, uh, there's a request that signs indicate weight finding and access control through the warehouse and delivery areas, those exist, correct?
Correct, there's a series of traffic control signs, do not enter in one way, some, uh, direct in one direction, or as they should. Thank you.
Okay, anybody from the board have any questions? For any of the professionals?
So at this time, we don't have a tenant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And what we're asking for really is prospectively, while the goodwill is in there, we don't wanna have to come back and go through this exercise again, should the goodwill leave. So to the extent that it's required when goodwill leaves, I would just ask that it would be approved for conditional use site plan or conditional use permit issue to use the building for warehouse since it is fully compliant with the ordinance.
My, my only concern is that we have an Amazon facility right up the street there, so if we have a warehouse filled with a competing Amazon type of thing, then I could imagine there'd be a, a fairly large flow of traffic.
That's not a warehouse, so what Amazon distribution facility, that's not what this is. We're coming in for a warehouse, which is a much different animal. Different parking requirements, different traffic, different everything.
Any thoughts about that, Jim?
No, no, the, the ordinance permits a warehouse, so it's gonna be very difficult for the board to base a denial on the fact that it's a warehouse, so that's, that's part of the problem.
Very good. Alright, I wish. How about from the public, anybody from the public have any questions? Okay. Close the hearing. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next one. Two, two-ten Chatham Avenue LLC, block thirty, twenty-five dot one, three, lot eleven, two-ten Chatham Avenue, Ocean, Zone R dash four, this application is for a minor subdivision to divide the property into two building lots, demolish the existing house, detach garage, et cetera, and construct two, construct a new two-story, single-family house with accessory structures related to the site improvements on each lot. Ms. Krimko, back again. Welcome.
And let me just mark in the, uh, the exhibits that I have. Exhibit A one will be the boundary survey of Nelson Engineering dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit A two is the minor subdivision plan from Nelson Engineering dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit A three is the preliminary and final site plan minor subdivision, um, Nelson, by Nelson Engineering dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit A four are the architectural plans for proposed lot eleven point oh one, dated March first, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit A five are the architectural plans for proposed lot eleven point oh two, dated March first, twenty twenty-three. I then have the following board exhibit, exhibit B one is in board one, will be the board engineer's report dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B two will be the board planner's report dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B three is the traffic safety bureau report dated Ju- June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit B four is the crime prevention report dated July sixth, twenty twenty-three, and exhibit B five is the fire marshal report for Fire District Number One, dated June fifth, twenty twenty-three. Did you have anything else? Okay. You wanna mark them as we get to them?
Yeah, I'm just, I have them to hand out, and can everybody see that, or do you want me to hand out reduced ones?
I don't hand out the reduced ones, I can have them.
So, A six is a color rendered tax map. And I'll have Dave explain what the colors mean. A seven is a color rendered tax map overlaid on an aerial, and again, I'll have Dave go up through that, and I just ask you to take on the rest of town, if you don't mind. A eight is a color rendered landscape plan sheet five of nine of the plan set. I have to hand out is the aerial photograph and that, but it, and that is, uh, the.
I missed one, what was A nine?
The landscape.
What was? I had A six was the colorized tax map. A seven was a colorized tax map with the over, overlaid on the, on the aerial.
Just trying to help, yeah.
So A nine, so we're only up to A nine for the aerial. Okay.
I didn't say anything.
And just so the board knows, I have Dave Bash here, who's gonna testify as the project manager and vice president of Nelson Engineering, and the project architect here, in case there are any questions regarding to the homes. And I have John Mcguffin here, who has a license to conduct planning, and I'd like to add to the planning, this is the support of the Mary to lead this. If I could have Dave sworn for this applicant.
Sir, do you swear a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
And just state your name, spell your last name for the record? Thank you, and you are the vice president of Nelson Engineering?
Yes.
So, if you could, and, and let's start with, um.
Hold on one second, let's just, let's do the professionals first. It's okay, don't apologize. I, it's alright. It's all good.
Okay, I'll, I'll read my report, it's just fairly short.
Sure.
An applicant's proposing a minor subdivision to divide the property into two building lots, demolish the existing house, detach garage, and other site improvements, and construct two new two-story, single-family residences with accessory structures. The site's an eighteen thousand square foot corner lot with a hundred and eighty feet of frontage on Chatham Avenue, and one hundred feet of frontage on Freehold Street, it's occupied by a single-family residence located at the southern half of the. It's occupied by a single-family residence located at the southern half of the lot. The site is in an area of single-family residences with varying lot areas. Subject site seems to be the largest lot in the immediate area. The existing site is conforming with the exception of the existing garage is located approximately three feet from the rear property line where five feet is required. The existing residence has approximately twenty feet rear yard setback where thirty feet is required. These are existing conditions that are not, that are being removed by the proposed development. Variances that are necessary, minimum lot area, the ordinance requires ten thousand square feet, each lot is nine thousand square feet. The applicant should provide testimony as to the character of the immediate area of the site, including the size of residences and whether there are other nine thousand square foot or smaller lots. It should be noted that both lots meet the required minimum setbacks, building impervious coverage requirements of the ordinance, so that there does not seem to be any significant negative impact. Accessory structure setback, the ordinance requires all accessory structures to maintain a ten-foot setback from the side and rear property lines, and this is where it gets a little bit confusing, so I will slow down a little bit when I read this. That the zoning officer is determined that this does not apply to walkways, including pool surrounds that are three feet wide or less, so that if a pool is ten foot from the property line and has a three-foot pool surround, no variance is necessary. For the most part, the proposed pools and pool surrounds comply. There is one small patio area measuring approximately three feet by twelve feet on proposed lot eleven point zero one, located between the residence and the pool, that is setback approximately seven feet and requires a variance. This could be easily be eliminated by indenting the patio three feet, so, so it complies with the ten-foot setback requirement. I would have no problem with the granting of this variance if the applicant can provide positive reasons as required by the municipal angeus law. No other variances appear to be necessary. As far as tree location and preservation, the plan provides for the removal of a total of twenty-two qualifying trees and replacement of seven for a deficit of fifteen trees. This requires a donation of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to the township Shetland Tree Fund, while there appears to be room on the site for some additional trees, given the proposed development, it is probable that the full fifteen trees would be difficult to locate, locate on the site in a manner where they would be able to grow into healthy, mature trees. The applicant should discuss whether any of the existing trees can be saved. So basically, with regard to trees, I, I think there's probably room on the site for some additional trees to be planted, but because of the extent of development that's proposed, where you have now two building lots that will be developed with houses, right now you have one lot and half of the lot is vacant, so that most of the trees that are being removed are on that vacant undeveloped part of the lot. So to replace, I think for, looking to replace all twenty-two of those trees, there's just not enough room to do it and have the trees be viable. They're going to grow up into one another, it's going to become a mess. So I think maybe if the board wants more trees on the site, they could condition any approval upon the applicant providing a plan that's acceptable to bend into, to make as far, as far as another trees.
I just want to ask you about this accessory structure setback. You said that if a pool is ten feet from the setback and they put a surround?
A three foot, yeah, a three foot walkway around the pool.
It's not, it's not in violation of the setback?
It's not a violation, because, look, the zoning officer's determination is that if you have a sidewalk that's three feet wide, it does not qualify for the required setback for an accessory structure.
I, I don't, I don't understand that, that doesn't make any sense.
I, I, I don't totally disagree with you.
Okay.
But that's her determination.
I appreciate that you say you don't totally disagree with me, Tim. I appreciate that.
Basically, before the zoning board, that's done routinely. You just don't, you don't happen to see that too often before you, yeah.
No.
That's actually, and just, just for further, I think part of the reason is, one, for safety, sort of safety to walk around the pool, they, she'd rather encourage the safety over that, and then second, the ten feet is for the accessory patio, which inherently there's noise and the light, the chairs and people playing, since it's only a sidewalk in her, and it's not her, it was actually, probably going back to Jerry Donald in the days, it's always been interpreted that it's not really a patio, it's just a walkway. That's just...
Yeah, that's, that, it's been that way for years, it's just you don't, you don't see these things, the zoning board sees them routinely.
Okay, Bennett?
Sure.
I should say, anybody from the board have any other questions for Jim? No? Okay, Bennett? You're up.
I'll, I'll, I won't read each of my comments, some of them are just technical in nature and, and changes to some details, things like that, but I'll, I'll hit on the, uh, major points. Um, it should be noted that the development does not exceed the maximum allowable impervious surface required by the ordinance. Uh, it also does not meet the definition of a major development, therefore compliance with the NJDP stormwater regulations is not required. However, they do propose, uh, two drywells, one on each lot, uh, so calculations should be provided for those for the sizing of the drywells for the one hundred year storm, um, and a stormwater operations and maintenance manual for each of the infiltration, uh, uh, subsurface infiltration basis should be provided. Um, uh, in accordance with section twenty-one fifty-five, seven, and eight of the ordinance, uh, curbs and sidewalks need provided on, on both sides of, of all streets in town. Uh, it should be noted that sidewalk does not exist everywhere in this neighborhood, but some does exist along portions of Freehold Street and curb exists along Chatham Avenue, but not on Freehold Street and basement of this property. Uh, basically, it's sporadic throughout the neighborhood, so it, it would be up to the determination, uh, of the board whether or not you wanted to require, uh, the applicant putting curbs and sidewalks along all the frontage of these properties. Uh, in my opinion, it's not entirely necessary. Um, a bathroom and laundry room are proposed in the basement of each proposed house. Uh, the applicant should verify the depth of the sanitary sewers in the road and whether or not an ejector pump would be required. Um... That should be reviewed, uh, and the utilities drainage should be shown on the landscaping plan. And, uh, any outside agency approvals would be required, uh, as in every application.
Any questions from the board?
Bennett, what is the, the amount of disturbance being proposed?
The amount of disturbance, I'm sorry? Eighteen thousand square feet, which is less than half an acre.
So Bennett, one of my concerns is always drainage, especially when it impacts the neighbors, so I just want to make sure you feel confident that, that we're not going to flood out the neighbors as we change the composure here.
Yeah, the, uh, the plan shows, uh, like I said, drywells, uh, that collect the roof leaders coming off the house, uh, and it, it pipes it to, uh, an infiltration, uh, area, so it's not, you know, running off into the neighboring properties, it's being collected and, and, uh, recharged back into the ground, which is essentially the, uh, the goal of the NJDP with their, um, updated, uh, stormwater regulations in twenty twenty-one, um, is that they, they want to encourage recharge into the ground, so I, I think that, that it's a, uh, reasonable design, and I just need the calculations to back it up, which I'm sure have already been done and can be provided, uh, if the applicant is so.
Second thing I want to talk about is the sidewalks, so we have lots of these sidewalks to nowhere in Ocean Township, but as we are updating our streets and road programs, we're adding curbs, we're adding sidewalks, I, I just wanted you to talk a little bit about this because this question has come up more than a few times now. Um, I guess what I'm asking for is your opinion. I mean, it looks nice, it's great, but yeah, if you're on your bike, it doesn't always make sense, so, but I do think at some point, the, the mission is from the township, is to put as many sidewalks and, you know, that we can, that we can walk through town and not feel that we have to walk in the street.
Right, so, uh, if you, if you went to the site, you would see on the, on Freehold Road, on the opposite side of, uh, this house, uh, there is sidewalk along the, the whole, you know, up and down Freehold Street. Um, on the side of the street that this house is on, there's not, there's no curb, uh, and there's no sidewalk. On Chatham Avenue, there's curb in front of this property, and there's not across the street. Uh, if you go further down the street, it's flipped, there's curb on, in front of one house on the other side of the street, and then not on the same side of the street as, as this property. So it is definitely sporadic. Um, if, if that is the, the, you know, board's desire to, you know, encourage sidewalks and curbs throughout, uh, town, I don't have a problem requiring it here, uh, because they are, uh, doing, you know, new curb cuts with new concrete driveway abrins, um, so that type of work is going to be done on this site, so to do additional curb and sidewalk is not beyond the scope of the, the improvements involved.
I mean, it just seems like we should, I mean, this is a process, right, to figure out and get the neighborhood in that direction, so I think every chance we get, we should try to take advantage of that, right? If we're going to start putting pieces to the puzzle together, we might as well do it one piece at a time when we can. That's my opinion.
Uh, one more question, so I haven't taken a look at the property, but the tree sizes, sometimes we start taking down what they call these legacy trees or these monstrosity trees, it's always a, a hot button issue. We've changed the tree ordinance in town, obviously we tightened it up, um, but, uh, do we have any of those monster trees that, uh, unfortunately people hate to see come down?
Uh, I don't think so, but I'll defer to Jim on that.
Yeah, I don't think so either from looking at it. Let me look at the plan.
The tree sizes are actually on...
Yeah, the tree sizes are on the plan, that's what I, when I looked at it, I didn't have a real concern.
Do you have a larger survey? Do you have a larger survey?
I didn't realize you didn't know, because there's so many sets, they don't...
There are locusts.
Nobody sent, nobody skipped.
Yeah, thirty-one inch locust, the locust is basically... There's a thirty-one inch locust on one corner of the one lot, but quite frankly, locusts are basically weeds. But there's a thirty-inch pine near the intersection of the two streets, and there's also a twenty-two inch cedar in the front of which would be lot eleven point oh one. They may be worth trying to save. The rest are, are maples and, and locusts, a couple of small cherries again along the frontage of, uh, Chatham, which without having to go out and actually looking at them, you can tell.
How do we determine what to do?
It could be a condition of approval that go out and work with the applicant on trying to save as many of the trees as possible.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, I mean, you know, whatever we can preserve, let's preserve it, yeah.
What's the determination on the preservation of them? Jim?
What's that?
What's the determination on the preservation of them? Is it you think it, or is it like as a...
It's looking at the condition of the tree, what the development they're proposing. For instance, they're putting swimming pools in the backyard, so most of those trees in the back of the site would very likely have to go if you're going to put the swimming pool in.
So...
And maybe some of them could be saved. Having a swimming pool that's surrounded by trees, I, I can understand why you don't want to have a swimming pool surrounded by trees. I'm going home tonight, and one of the things I want to do is clean my skimmers out, so, uh, but the trees along the front of the site may wind up being, if they're in good condition, they might, might wind up being able to be saved.
What I'm just going to add is that I'm not arguing, and will definitely be happy to work with Jim to see what can be saved, but just looking at it in the grand scheme of it, and certainly you're here from the planner, if this lot were not subdivided, there would be home tennis courts, swimming pools, things of the like could be put there without the need for any variance relief. I believe unless it, that has been changed, I'll defer to you, Councilman, that the tree preservation ordinance only requires replacement for trees that are nine inches or greater for a single-family homeowner that doesn't need a variance, whereas by virtue of a subdivision, you have to do it for six inches or greater. So were this not before you for a subdivision, the homeowner could go in and take down all of the trees and then do the replanting or payment into the fund?
I don't, I don't agree with that.
Actually, as a, as a class two member of the board, I would be very excited to inform Mr. Crimco that we did change the ordinance, so now it's six inches.
That's why I asked. Okay, so it is the same thing.
We, we, we brought them together, just because it did make sense to have six inches of variance.
Right, which is what I said. We talked about that at the last, this was the last one we were hearing.
Really? Okay, I, I don't recall.
No, that's great, but all I'm, all I'm saying is, is that this is your opportunity to save them, decide where they get planted, but I think your ordinance, and I know how sensitive everybody on the board is as it relates to trees, and I'm not arguing against saving them, I'm just saying the subdivision isn't necessitating the trees coming down, that vacant lot will be developed regardless, it's just a function of what, that's all. But thank you, Mr. Defilia, I knew that there was a change, I wasn't aware of that.
And I understand your, your planner's going to discuss the profile, what the house looks like?
Yeah, the architect will say that.
I'm sorry, the architect will give us, uh, so it's conforming to the neighborhood, we can get to that, we can get to that, it's fine.
All right, and, and just, since you're previewing, what the planner will also testify is to that these two smaller houses on the smaller lots are going to be far more appropriate than a very large house, uh, on this oversized lot for the neighborhood as it relates to the character, but I'm going to let him do all that testimony.
Anybody else have any other questions for our planner?
I, I just have a question about the sidewalks and the trees, we're talking about preserving the trees, and, and I disappeared from in front of me. With the sidewalk being installed, jeopardize those larger trees that are closer to the corner?
Cherries.
Well, if the sidewalk is within the right of way, there's really only one tree, it's a twenty-two inch spruce that would be removed.
Gotcha.
All the others are, are actually on the property, so...
Yeah, that would be on, on Chatham Avenue.
On Chatham Avenue, yeah.
And then on Freehold Street, it looks like there, there's room between the property line and the edge of pavement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's always a, a, uh, something to consider when you're putting in sidewalks, not even necessarily, uh, that the tree, a tree is in the way, but if you dig into the roots too much, it can damage a tree.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't shaking at that, I was shaking at something.
Are you okay? Okay, do you need a minute?
No.
Okay. Would you like to continue?
I would, thank you. Actually, just to begin, I agree, we, yes, you were swearing. Okay, so Dave, starting with the aerial, let's identify the site, what's existing on it, and explain next what the color rendered, uh, tax map is, and then let's finally go to what we're proposing.
Referring to A nine, which is aerial photograph alone, uh, the subject property is outlined in yellow, goes to southwest corner of the intersection of Freehold Street and Chatham Avenue, and as you can tell by the, uh, the photograph itself, the existing structure and detached garage is located toward the south end of the property, leaving the northern field of the property, looking like there's supposed to be a house here, because of all the other corners are built, this one is not. Uh, so what we'll be proposing to do is remove the two existing structures and subdivide the property in half, creating two nine thousand square foot lots. They'll have ninety feet of frontage on Chatham Avenue, uh, and a hundred foot in depth.
Dave, do you have the color, the color rendered tax map over the aerial? I think before we go to that, let's just go to that, since it's aerial to aerial.
Yeah.
And, uh, the planner will go into the significance of A seven. Uh, again, this is the aerial photograph with the tax map superimposed, and then some color coding indicating the, uh, area characteristics of the lots in the neighborhood. The color coding, again, the property is outlined in yellow with the proposed subjects in line bisecting the property. There are two properties that are colored in yellow, those are existing properties of the same proposed area of nine thousand square feet, or in the case of the, of block three and block twenty-five point one three, that is, uh, nine thousand nine hundred square feet, so it doesn't have to require ten thousand square feet, but it does have, uh, a variance, area variance required for. The properties in red are those properties which have an area of less than nine thousand square feet. Uh, so you can see there is a, a number that are present in this area.
Okay, this one, and the tax map overlay, the color coding is the same, only the subject property is in green.
That's correct. And also I wanted to point out two corrections. Uh, when I had originally done this, I was just looking at the tax map information. Mr. Crimco requested that I look back at property records to see whether or not any of the properties have actually been consolidated with the adjoining property. And lot five and six and block twenty-five point zero six are common ownership, so that one was removed. And block six and block twenty-five twelve is a vacant lot of separate ownership. So it was added in, I had originally believed it was part parcel of lot five, but it is not.
And now going to what we moved in, the the color rendered uh, landscape plan. What are we proposing? You heard from Jim's uh, report that we're removing all of the existing improvements, including some of the non-conformities? And what are we proposing to put in its stead?
Okay, we're showing two two stories in the bedrooms. Uh, each of the dwellings will conform to the setback requirements of the zone. Uh, we are also proposing uh, driveways capable of accommodating four vehicles per driver. The dwellings do not have detached garages, so the number of bedrooms we're providing for all street parking spaces.
How many, how many bedrooms?
Uh, the architect will go into detail, such number of bedrooms we had designed for activity.
So five, two five-bedroom houses.
Right, and we have parking to accommodate that.
That's correct.
What's the square footage on the home?
The architect will testify to that.
Additionally, we're depicting two pools and two uh, patios in a three-yard each structure to add a little bit of detail to Jim's comments regarding the patio width and setback from property line. The area intersection uh, which we are having to remove occurs on lot eleven point zero one. Into your lot. And it's a three-foot wide area located to the south, east corner of the pool patio.
So the way you notched it out on the top or the west, we could do that on the side as well and that would be.
That's correct.
With regard to the trees, as you look at the survey and the larger trees that were referenced uh, by Jim, can attempts be made to save them based on the ratings that we're proposing?
Can I can I comment on that first? I just, they took my the opportunity to look at the Google Maps and the trees that are along Chatham Avenue. While they're substantial trees in terms of the diameter of the trunk, they're under power lines. And they have been chopped up to the point where I think it would be much better to just remove them, that they look like hell, quite frankly. And just remove them and put street trees behind where they are. A a plan that shows the street trees, the landscape plan, I think the street trees have to be moved back another ten feet or so. Just because because of those power lines that are there. Anything that's placed under those power lines is gonna grow up, they're gonna be cut back again by the power companies. And they they don't really give any consideration for aesthetics, they just wanna get the the branches away from the lines. So you have, for instance, that the uh, twenty-two inch spruce that's within the right of way uh, in front of lot eleven point oh one is basically got holes and it doesn't look like a decent tree at all. The thirty-one inch, where was it? On the corner. Yeah, there there, now there's another, there is another tree there and I'm not sure which one that is. Another evergreen, I don't see here on the plan. Uh, and that is basically, it's half a tree. Right now, they're just taking the half the tree and cut right down.
So you think there's more trees that need to be removed?
There might, I think there's one more tree there.
So you're saying twenty-three trees?
Unless unless you're looking at it, I might have been looking at the twenty-two inch cedar and the twenty-two inch spruce too. It's entirely possible. But but the trees that are along Chatham Avenue are just, because of the power lines, they're they're worthless. That's my my opinion.
So what do we do? We gotta bring the trees back a little bit?
Yeah, the, yeah, that's the street trees, I think have to get moved back a little bit.
Is there enough room to do that? So you can bring them back, you're not gonna affect the construction? I I I I get it, I mean, nobody wants these things on the power lines. Every time there's a storm, they go down, neighborhood's out of power. I mean, you got a chance to do it right, might as well do it right, you know? My only concern is, you know, if you have a beautiful legacy tree, you hate to get rid of it if you know. You know? But if it's, they're all messed up, doesn't make sense.
And just to correct what I said, the the one tree that's half a tree is the thirty-one inch pine at the corner. Just the angle I was looking at it on in the, on the photo online made it look like it was closer to the center of the lot, but it is right on the corner. So all the trees that are on the lot are shown on the plan.
So again, what happens? We're giving you the ju- the judgment, Jim, on which ones to keep and which ones not to keep? Is that how we're doing this?
That's that's up to the board.
Well, can, Jim, can you consult with Mr. Brooks in Ron's office on this?
Yeah, that very definitely.
Okay.
We have a tree expert, let's use him.
Yeah.
We do?
Yeah.
Mr. Crimco, would you like to continue?
Yes, thank you. Uh, we were just taking notes of that whole discussion, should this go forward. Uh, so again, Dave, so we can cut back the patio to make everything fully conformant.
That's correct.
And we're removing the conform, the non-conformities as they relate to the existing conditions.
That's correct. Setback of the previous structures, that's called the setback of the detached garage.
Okay, and with regard to the trees, you just heard the uh, discussion going back and forth. We can work with both Jim Higgins and Mr. Brooks, the tree expert, to make a determination as to what trees can be saved and where we can plant additional trees.
We will work it out with the tree expert, yeah.
Okay. Um, looking at, I'd like to go to Ben's letter. I'd have to have it to do that. Here it is. Uh, looking at Ben's letter and uh, going on one and two, we just.
Miss, can I interject for a second? On the green, on that green uh, rendering right there, the one in the middle?
Yes.
There's a little yellow rectangle in the backyard. What is that?
That's the pool equipment.
Right there?
Yeah. Uh, pool equipment is required to be ten feet off of any property line and not in the front yard area. And typically, the clients all that we've been working with it, working with, want it as far removed from the pool as possible.
But obviously, we can landscape that.
And is there pool equipment for the other house?
It's over here.
It's in the corner.
It's in the corner.
Down the pool patio at the northwest corner.
Oh, I see it. Okay. Nice. That's weird. Pool equipment in the pill of the backyard. Got it.
They're okay with that? It's a strange spot.
Pool equipment, you mean like the um, the filters and pumps and all that stuff, okay.
That's as far as it can be to the property line. I mean, obviously, they'd like it to be even closer to the property line, but we have to meet the ten feet. Um, so one and two were discussed, three we can comply with, and that's with regard to the manual.
Yes.
Uh, four is with regard to the pool fence, we have to comply with that, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, five, uh, we will comply with the roadway pavement repair?
Yes, we will.
Okay, and six, again, it's gonna be up to the board with regard to curbs and sidewalks. Uh, seven, the question is with regard to the depth of the sanitary sewers and whether an ejector pump is required.
We'll provide that information.
And eight, in addition to coordinating with Mr. Brooks and Mr. Higgins on the trees, you'll also update the plans to show where the utilities and drainage is.
Yes, we will.
Okay, and the outside agencies, obviously, should the board approve, we would be required to.
Yes, we will.
That's all I have for Dave, knowing the architect and the planner are still to come.
Anybody have any questions for Dave?
I just have one question. Dave, can you s- even speculate why that property was left? I know it's a speculation, but it seems really kind of odd that they left a corner lot not built. I mean, it's almost like you gotta go back to nineteen forty to figure out why that happened, but it's it seems odd to me.
About to speculate?
Yeah.
I prefer you wouldn't, but go ahead.
It would be holding a reserve to be sold off later.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost not, it doesn't make any sense for the neighborhood. It's like, you know, so you've got this corner lot, which is sometimes desirable and literally just a ball field back there.
It it may, as long as we're speculating.
Yeah.
It may have been that when they were formed, they were all smaller lots. And the zone changed and required the larger lots and it probably merged as a matter of law because it was in common ownership. So what Dave said is probably right. Someone bought both lots, intended to develop the corner, didn't do it in time, so the zone changed and it became one lot. But you can see, it's an older neighborhood and most of the homes that are constructed are on these smaller lots.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions today?
I don't think so. We can go to the next professional.
Wait, would you like to call Alan Zimler?
There's no one here from the public has a question, right? Okay. Just wanna make sure.
As Alan's setting up, I'll have him swear, but he's just gonna testify to the plans that were already uh, entered into evidence.
Is there Zimler? Do you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, I think what the truth has helped you got? Can you just state your name for the record?
Alan Zimler, Z-I-M-B-L-E.
Have you ever licensed architect, state of New Jersey?
I am.
Thank you very much.
And you've testified in front of this board in the past?
I have.
Thank you, so we need to submit a. Zoning board in the past, submit a minutes and exit.
It's okay, yes.
So.
Take it. As word.
Uh, Alan, with regard to the plans that were uh, submitted into evidence uh, as A four and A five, you design homes for both lots, propose eleven oh one and eleven oh two.
Yes.
Okay, could you just briefly describe those uh, homes for the board? And if you're gonna get up over there, I think you have to take the mic. Amy, yeah, right?
Amy, Amy.
No, I'm saying, usually Amy fixes the mic, so I don't know if Claire knows how to do that.
You might have that on switch.
Oh, yeah. On the bottom.
I gotta hit it hard?
Have to hit it, have to hit it hard.
Magic touch.
Okay, so each of these represents each of the houses on the on the subdivision. Uh, they are very similar in their um, scope and um, what we're proposing for each house. Essentially, as Dave said, it's a two-story home uh, with a finished basement. The square footage is approximately thirty-two hundred square feet plus a finished basement. Um, the first floor for, again, each of these houses, we tried not to make the houses exactly the same, we really wanted to vary them since they were uh, adjacent to each other on the subdivision. But they each have the similar program, dining room, large kitchen, eat-in, breakfast area, den, and a family room, living room. So each of them is more or less the same program, uh, but the configurations for each is a little different. The basements for each home have a housekeeper, uh, bedroom with a bathroom and a laundry room and an open finished area. On the second floor, there are five bedrooms, so there are a total actually of six bedrooms. So there, each one has a master suite with a master bath and then there are four bedrooms that each share two bathrooms a piece.
Okay, and looking at the elevations, if we can go to that, although the ordinance now allows two and a half stories in living space on an attic floor, uh, these are designed just as the two stories and they are, they meet the height requirement of thirty-five feet or under?
Yes.
So what would the height be as measured from the finished floor?
Uh, on site eleven oh two, height is twenty-five foot four. And on eleven oh one, the height is twenty-six foot two. Uh, they're very low pitched roofs, so we're able to conform to the ordinance.
Okay, so there could be thirty-five foot homes, but.
Correct.
And larger, but these are smaller in size.
Right.
Um, trying to think if there are other questions, no, I think that probably.
Each property has four parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that this house represents the other houses that are in the neighborhood?
Uh, I believe it's a, it's a representation of the of the homes that we're currently building throughout Ocean.
No, but that's not what I asked.
Yes.
I I mean, the house next door is probably a three-bedroom house, this, you're saying this is two six-bedroom houses.
Correct.
Yeah, so I wouldn't say that's the same.
Are there larger homes that have this many bedrooms within this neighborhood?
Yes, of course.
I have a question regarding the way the houses are facing, being you're dealing with a corner lot. Are they both gonna be facing on Chatham?
I don't.
Yes, they're both facing on Chatham.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Do you have more to do?
Don't get mad at me when I ask it, but I'm gonna ask it. Um, if this lot were not subdivided and someone built a twelve-bedroom home or even larger based on what would be allowed here, would that be, would that be less in character with the neighborhood than what we're proposing here?
Yeah, I mean, this is considering that this is a much larger property compared to the other homes nearby, it would be, you know, a McMansion probably.
Right, okay, thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, but that's really not what we're discussing here, right?
But it is, because as you're gonna hear from the testimony from the uh, planner, uh, and as was upheld in the case law in the Kramer case, which allowed for a subdivision of a lot that was undersized in both width and in area, um, the court found in that case that allowing the subdivision with such a minor deviation is actually a better zoning alternative because the two houses that can be constructed on these much smaller lots are much, much more in conformance with the character of the neighborhood. So respectfully, that's.
No, I, no, I understand what you're saying. I understand, but 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 if we did, but as a board, if we decided that the variants weren't, didn't make sense, didn't make sense, if somebody wanted to build a bigger house, they build a bigger house.
Understood, but what I'm telling you is is.
No, I get your point.
It's relevant because the courts have found that the, that this, the the idea of building smaller homes on smaller lots in a character of a neighborhood with smaller lots is a better zoning alternative than what would be permitted under the ordinance today.
I understand what you're saying.
Duly noted what you have to say, but we don't, I, some of us don't agree.
Just, just, just so you understand, when you look at the character of the area, you don't just look at the character of what's built in the area now, you have to look at the character of the area as zoned. So that you could say, there's a number of conforming lots in this area and also smaller lots.
Sure.
That people could build larger homes on without coming for variances.
Mm-hmm.
And so, so when you're looking at character, you have to look at not only what exists, but what what it's zoned for.
Yeah. So is the four, is the four, is the?
Can I just say something, Mr. One, just really quickly? I just wanna be clear, there's no variances for the bedrooms. Okay, so so if the application were to be denied, it cannot be denied based upon the number of bedrooms that are.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes.
I wanna make, so when you say you don't agree, I just wanna make sure that's not what you're referring to.
I just said, I have my opinion, that's all I said.
Okay. That is not, but I just wanna make it very clear for the board, you cannot deny an application based upon the number of beds being proposed.
So is a four, is a four?
You'll make sure of that, Mark.
Is a four-car car driveway suitable for a six-bedroom home?
I believe it meets the resus standard.
Yes.
I think it does.
Yes, it does.
It meets the state requirement.
The the driveways are twenty foot wide and the smaller one is thirty-six foot uh, deep. And that, if you consider a parking space as ten by eighteen, which is how it's defined in the ordinance, uh, fit for ten by eighteen rectangle, that that's right.
Okay.
No garage, correct?
No garage.
But typically, just when you have that and you have the area between the sidewalk, should it be required to be built for the pavement? Should it not? The the nine by eighteen or the ten by eighteen is the standard that we're required to show, but more often than not, you can fit an additional car on the end each time when you have a driveway of that length.
It, it, and there's no, is there anything permissible or not permissible about that? No?
You're not allowed to park in on the sidewalk.
Okay, so you can have as many cars as you want inside that area, as long as you don't obstruct it, sorry.
Just just so you, so you understand, recess for a fo- the the highest it goes and. Just, just so you understand, recess for a, the highest it goes in terms of bedrooms, parking requirement, is for a five-bedroom, it needs three spaces. But when you look at it, a three-bedroom requires two, a four-bedroom requires two point five, and a five-bedroom requires three. So for each bedroom, they're talking about increasing it for a half space.
Okay.
When you follow that through, a six-bedroom would require three point five.
Okay.
I have one other question again with this, the alignment of these homes. I, I'm trying to picture, but I, I can't to be honest with you. The houses on Freehold, that this one corner lot, any other side streets that are in the same scenario, are they, are you looking at the side of the house from Freehold? Typically, I mean, beyond Chatham? I'm just, I'm trying to get the vision of what it's gonna look like on Freehold. Like meaning, there's houses facing Freehold and then this corner lot is gonna be facing Chatham.
Yeah, I mean, we, we envisioned the house facing on, on Chatham, so.
I can't hear him.
Yeah.
I'm saying, we've envisioned the house facing Chatham and there was a side yard on Freehold, so.
I think it's still part of the reason also is having lived in that neighborhood, that's where I bought my first house, was Freehold is a very busy roadway. And if you front it on Freehold and the driveway's on Freehold, now you have more cars backing in and out of Freehold. So from a safety perspective, it just made more sense to try.
I was just curious the way it looked, I, I find we're looking at Freehold.
There always has to be, there always has to be a side on the corner lot, so it's gonna be one or the other.
Right.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is if you front the house on Freehold, it's gonna encourage people to park on Freehold in front of the house, whereas if it's fronted on Chatham, if somebody wants to park on the street in front of the house, they're gonna park on Chatham.
I was just thinking about what it would look like, that's all.
Any other questions for the architect? You wanna continue with your planner? Oh, sure, yeah.
So, so we're gonna have, what you're gonna have to do is.
You have to come up, state your name and your address. You can have a seat next to Mr. Curran, you have to state your name.
So let me just, let me just swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you got? And just state your name for the record?
Ava Salbo, S-A-L-B-O-W-A.
And it's Ava, A-V-A?
Yes.
And what's your address, Ms. Salbo?
Four eighty-five Freehold.
Thank you, go ahead.
We're the house that we intend to come down. Um, I just, we've done a lot of work on our house in years and had to get a lot of variances. And are you telling me that with all this work, not one variance is needed?
Correct.
Well, no, 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 I mean.
No, 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 for the houses.
For the house itself, there's no variance.
The only variance is the lot size. Ten thousand square feet is required, nine thousand square feet, fully conform.
And for the pools.
Except for the one patio.
No, we've already said we're not, we just.
They did suggest a.
We're eliminating that variance.
With the pools being so close to the property line, is that?
It's a ten-foot setback required and the pools all have ten feet.
I find it hard to believe, but. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Anybody else in the public have any questions? Okay, continue with your planner. Actually, can I, can I ask you, can I take a bathroom break, please?
You don't have to ask me, you're the chair.
I'm gonna take a bathroom break.
I think the planner did too.
Oh, let's go.
What?
It's the only way to get everyone's attention. Oh, you're welcome.
Oh, the planner.
Thank you.
This is the planner?
This is the planner. Handsome fellow, isn't he?
Mister Chairman, we will make clear for the record, are we back on?
You're blushing.
No.
Hold on, we have to wait till you get back on.
Dave knows me well enough to know who that is.
We have to do a roll call?
I will announce, are we back on?
Yeah.
We, Mister Chairman, will note for the record that everyone who was here before is still here. We do not need to do a roll call.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. If I could introduce our planner, have him sworn, he'll put his credentials on the record.
Yes, Ms. McDonough, do you swear any testimony you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you got?
Yes, I do.
And just state your name for the record?
Sure, hi there, everyone. My name is John McDonough, it's spelled M-C-H-O-N-O-U-G-H. I'm a planner.
Thank you, and, and you're, you're a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey at this time?
Yes, also AICP, that's National All Current Analysis Society.
Thank you.
Just so the board is aware, I, I know Mr. McDonough.
You know him, you're vouching for him, Jim? You're vouching for him?
I'm vouching for him, yes, excellent planner.
Okay, okay, all right. We accept his credentials.
Thank you.
Just continue.
John, you had the opportunity to review all the exhibits we moved in, the application, heard the testimony. Could you walk the board through the application from a planning perspective, particularly what we need to demonstrate for the variance, the single variance for each lot of a thousand square feet, and how we meet this statute?
Sure. There's really two sides to this application. We always look from a planning standpoint at the practical side, from a physical planning standpoint, whether this integration here of these two new homes in this established neighborhood are a positive integration or I'll say a better zoning alternative. And if we kept the land the way it is, it came in with a new house here. Second part of that is we've got some case law, deferred back to council as well. Sort of the operative words there is the phrase improved neighborhood harmony, whereby you can achieve two homes that are of a comparable size to what could be under the zone scheme in comparison to what could be without the subdivision. That again is a better zoning alternative and a, a basis for the relief here. Here in New Jersey, we have two C-type variances. The older C is the hardship C, we call it the C one. That's been out there since the statute started. We also have the newer C two balancing, and this, I'm going to tell the board, is really the balancing, the C two balancing test, which didn't come online until about ten years after the statute came into being. And if I go testify outside of New Jersey, we really don't have that balancing. So it's another reason why New Jersey is on the cutting edge, I think, in terms of land use. We don't have to show hardship here, and that's not what the applicant is claiming. We have to show that this is a better zoning alternative for the land and for the neighborhood. And the reason why this is a better zoning alternative is because as you can see, we have an established neighborhood here of homes that are all relatively similarly sized and lots that are relatively similarly sized as well. The zone requires ten thousand square feet, and you can see in exhibit A seven here that we have lots that, a number of lots that are actually.
Well, John, let me just correct you. You're not saying that the existing homes are similarly sized necessarily what they could be based on
Under the zone scheme.
what the zoning allows and based on the lot sizes that are there.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
So we always have to look at the, the potential build-out. And when we're looking at a lot, which the subject lot here, we have a line struck through where the proposed subdivision would be, but as we know, the lot as it stands now is substantially oversized in the context of the zone scheme, substantially oversized in the context of the neighborhood. I heard the one board member raise the question of why this happened, and it could have been banking the land for an heir or for someone down the road. Who knows? All we know is we've got this land there. It's sitting fallow, it's not contributing to the neighborhood in its current condition. It's really underutilized in the context of the state where we have scarcity of land or we have scarcity of good quality housing. So this is an opportunity here, again, to provide a home that is more in harmony with the zone scheme than the current condition of the property.
I think, John, importantly, the only variance for each is the thousand square feet we're short on area. The lot width and depth comply, so from the street, these lots are gonna look fully conforming.
Very important. The way we perceive overcrowding from the public realm is based on lot width and setbacks. If our setbacks are not conforming or a lot width is not conforming, these houses would look overcrowded. As you've heard, in terms of all of your strict bulk criteria, the building heights, the building coverage, the lot coverage, the setbacks on all sides, the floor area comply with what could be under the zone scheme here. Certainly much different than if we have a build-out of a two, three thousand square foot lot. In terms of the zone, we're in the R four median density residential district. The subdivision here is going to create two full-size lots, split right down the middle, so there's good balance, there's good symmetry, there's good proportionality here. The only relief is for that lot area, nine thousand square feet, where ten thousand square feet would be the minimum required. So we're looking at an application where the lots are ninety, ninety percent compliant in terms of the zone scheme. And again, a hundred percent compliant in terms of the, the lot width and what we would envision from the street. In terms of the justification for the relief, the textbook case whenever we're dealing with C two balancing is a case known as the Kaufman case. It comes and is handed down from our department court. That case involved a two-lot subdivision that created undersized lots, very similar, fat, similar fact pattern. And it also had deficient lot widths, which this application does not. The court there ruled that two smaller dwellings were a better zoning alternative than one large dwelling. And you've heard our special testimony, these homes are going to be in the range without the basement of about thirty-five hundred square feet.
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred in, in terms of, well, without the, without the basement. Again, more aligned with what would be contemplated on a ten thousand square foot lot and what could be realized essentially double that on a, an eighteen thousand square foot lot. So much like the Kaufman case, we're looking at the court finding that two smaller dwellings are a better zoning alternative. The fact pattern here is, is very consistent. We also have another case, Green Meadows versus Monville, that's an appellate division case that is similar to Kaufman, except in that case, the court reversed the denial. The Kaufman case upheld an approval, the Green Meadows case actually reversed a denial. So the point here for the board to consider, of course, is the legal aspect, and we operate as planners within a legal framework, and we have cases very similar to this which have been decided to the extent that we have some good law here on our side. We also have the practicality to the application. As I said, these homes are not going to appear overly large in the context of the neighborhood, but more in harmony with what could be than that larger home. They will not appear as easy to, for the reasons I've given, and this is where the balancing comes in. Unbalancing the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. And in the Kaufman case, the quote again was improved neighborhood harmony as the basis for C two relief. We have section sixty-two of the land use law that says zoning should revolve around the neighborhood pattern. This is the envisioned neighborhood pattern here. The project will deliver new housing stock that's in keeping with the character of the area. Aesthetic, aesthetically, the project is going to fill a void. These are going to be very attractive homes that'll accentuate the corner there, they'll add value, they'll add quality to the neighborhood. Certainly much more improved over that which presently exists now. All of the above, for all purposes of the land use law, especially purpose A, purpose D, purpose G, purpose I, and purpose M. They all echo the things I just told you, efficient land use, variety of land uses, promotion of the general welfare, promotion of a positive aesthetic. On the negative side, for all the reasons that have been given by the testimony on the record and all of these great visuals that you've seen, relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the area. Visually, these homes will be on scale with the homes that are not only in the immediate area, but the greater context as well. And functionally, the dwellings are designed to be safe, efficient, and comfortable to live in. Lastly, the last prominent of the negative criteria, relief can be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan. The zone intent behind these controls is to provide for adequate light and air. That is met by virtue of the compliance with all of your other controls that go towards light and air. And then, of course, what you see on exhibit A seven with all of these red lots in the area that would also be similar size or lesser size than what the applicant is proposing here. I shouldn't say similar, of identical size or lesser than what the applicant is proposing here. We looked at it in even greater context and we found seventy lots, over seventy lots, within two of the three blocks of the site that are the same or smaller size. The last relief relates that patio setback, which we got right up to you, which is good, okay. So again, this strong case law here, I think there's a good common sense practical side to this application as well. This is going to blend in well with the neighborhood and it's in very nicely. So all said, the positives substantially outweigh the negatives, and I think the statutory test here certainly.
Anybody have any question for the planner?
I have a comment again.
Go ahead.
Just, two things. One, this is just my comment. I can't believe that the law is based on what future building could be, what that neighborhood could look like versus what actually is in existence today. If I understood what you guys were saying before.
That, that is the standard of stuff.
I find, okay, that just amazes me.
I, I understand your trepidation, but I have to give you a professional opinion, and I'm giving you a professional opinion, yeah.
If I can, if you can, just to explain, so let's say we came today for a variance and you said, well, all the houses are one-story there. So we don't think a two-story fits, even though it fully conforms. Ten years from now, the neighborhood could turn over and every single one of those homes could be two-story, and now the one-story is the one that doesn't fit. So you have to look at what the zone actually allows there to compare it to, because it's likely that eventually, whether we like it or not, there's going to be that change to meet with the zoning. I think that's the idea behind it.
And my second question, well, the second thing I wanted to ask was, the size of these homes are thirty, what was this?
Thirty-two hundred?
Thirty-two hundred? Versus the size of the lot, are they overbearing a lot?
We, we need building coverage, we need lot coverage, we need setbacks, we need everything.
I'm running that kind of fast together.
But I'm, okay, but.
Box is about sixteen hundred.
Okay.
Footprint's about sixteen hundred, but the, the total floor area is thirty-two on both floors.
Okay, I'll shut up.
I have a question for the planner. What do you think about the loss of the trees on this site?
Well, again, the trees are, the trees are there, again, you've got some big solid testimony from the engineer in that regard that those trees could go under a build-out of an approved, a conforming plan. So the loss of those trees, in my view, could be inevitable under any build-out. The building envelope.
So you're saying, you think it's a positive that the trees are being removed?
Well.
Cause I didn't hear that in a negative.
There are, it's a, it's a zone that is zoned for, for houses, it is zoned for development. And the trees that would come down as part of this subdivision are something that the zone plan contemplates as being okay, given the fact that we have the building envelope there. So the tree loss here is not going to be any greater than under a zone plan.
But I think also, if I can just follow up on that question, when you look at positive and negative, you have to look at the zoning ordinance. If the zoning ordinance allows for the trees to come down, provided you comply, so from a planning perspective, if you're complying with the ordinance, is that, is there a negative?
Again, the zone intent is that that's contemplated over the zone, the huge impacts associated with the conforming plan are considered instead of setting up the zone.
All right, let me ask you this way. If the configuration of the proposed improvements to the property, the land, the, the housing, the pool, could there be more trees proposed for this particular property?
Proposed to be saved or proposed to?
Be planted.
We agreed to that, Mr. DeBenedetto, Dr. DeBenedetto.
What, agreed to what?
That we would work with Mr. Brooks and Mr. Higgins to plant more trees throughout the development.
But that's not what I asked. I asked that, you know, based on the improvements that you're going to do, could you plant more trees? I'm asking the planner.
Right, again, it's something we would have to look at from an engineering standpoint. New development requires a lot of add-ons these days in terms of runoff controls and utility lines. I'm a, I am a landscape architect. I know we could fit more trees on here from a pure physical standpoint. We just would have to make sure they don't conflict with those, with those drainage structures.
Okay. Dave, you have a question?
No, I, I think that the only thing that, I think that if you're gonna, I'm going back to the sidewalks here. I, I do believe we probably should sidewalk Chatham Street there.
We didn't have that tonight.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best thing. It would just, I guess you gotta, you know, talk to township engineer and find out which roads have been paved, what's part of the road program, but I think that's probably, you know, the one thing I think would be really beneficial at that point.
Just Chatham or Chatham and Freehold?
Well, I think Freehold is kind of weird because Freehold doesn't have the, so I think that's gonna look strange.
The one thing to consider is that this is a corner lot.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna do it anywhere, that's where you start.
Yeah, I would think, I would think you'd do it.
I'm going with your, your.
I, I'm not, I'm not a planner, but that would be.
I think, just like we were telling, if you're gonna start putting sidewalks, put sidewalks in, right?
It's a good point.
I was told during the break, it would be my client's pleasure to put sidewalks in, if that's what.
Pleasure, nice.
Well, then I will.
For me, I'm closed.
All right, well, okay. All right, well, okay, that sounds good then.
Anybody else have any questions? Any questions for the public? Okay, let's close the hearing, do we have any discussion, we could have discussion?
I would just re, I would just remind the board that there are no variances associated with the house, period.
Right.
The only variance is the, um, the si- the, the, uh, the size of the, the property itself, that's only a thousand off. This is something that the board has to keep in mind.
Yeah.
The size of the house is not at issue really in this case.
Can we go back to the sidewalks again?
Sure.
And, and I, and I, and I love to, to hear Jim's thought on this, I, I'm one hundred percent sidewalks on Chatham. Freehold has sidewalks all along that northern side, and we can get to, pedestrians can get to all sorts of different places, they get to the park, they can get over to the school. I'm just wondering, since there's an established sidewalk, there's no other sidewalks on the south side of this street that we're aware of currently, right? If we don't put sidewalks there, if it would be more possible to put more trees there, cause you won't have the sidewalk setback.
So, for, you know, from my small understanding, the township is interested in paving or sidewalking one side of certain streets, they're not looking to add, you know, you don't always wanna do double, cause obviously decreases everybody's, uh, liability, increases all the work and the money. So if you feel that there's sufficient sidewalk, uh, you know.
I'm tossing that out for discussion, cause I can go either way.
Well, what's the proba- what's the probability of the, how, how contiguous is the sidewalk on the, on the other side?
You can see it right there.
Yeah, it's.
On the aerial photo, you see this?
And I believe we heard testimony that on the north side, it's contiguous down the entire length of Freehold.
It is.
But it is not on the south side.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, it'll be the sidewalk to nowhere if you.
It's not at all.
Right, and it could also potentially create a drainage issue for the next door neighbor, but there's no sidewalk, cause there's a hill, I don't know which way the hill.
So everybody wants to walk across the cross street.
Or, or, or also as a runner who encounters these sidewalks to nowhere in town frequently, and all of a sudden I'm going down a block and then I'm in the street, we would have a sidewalk down half a street and then be forced to cross in the middle of the street to get to a sidewalk, whereas if we just left the sidewalk at the corner, it'd be a clear crossing. But this is just kind of me supplying, I'd really like to hear Jim's thoughts on, and, and Bennett's thoughts on this, one way or the other.
What about a curb, would we put curb on Freehold?
I don't feel strongly about a curb one way or the other, but.
Yeah, there is no curb, and that's.
There's no curb, there's no curb on that side of the road on Freehold, and there's no sidewalk on that side of the road. There's only sidewalk on the opposite side, on the north side, in that block.
Okay, yeah.
If you go out, out, f- the, uh, away from Chatham, you'll come across curb and sidewalks on the north side, but, um,
And.
I, 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 I think you could, you could go either way with it.
Yeah, and following up on Ed's comment, as far as putting more landscaping along Freehold, there's no power lines on the south side of Freehold, it's all on the north side where the sidewalk is. So might, you might get more bang for the buck doing more landscaping along Freehold and not having a sidewalk.
Hmm, that was a good point.
Not essentially an open yard anyway, so there's no improvements going there, so we really can't put quite a bit of trees there.
So how do we make?
That would probably help Estelle's concern too, as far as the visit, the, the care to the house.
Yeah.
So we.
Make a stipulation?
So you only want side, if the application is approved, you're only having sidewalks along Chatham, not Freehold, is that I'm hearing?
Yes.
And that the additional trees would, we'd work with Jim to put as many trees as possible in that Freehold area.
Additional trees. On the Freehold area.
Sidewalks won't be taking up the root area.
Yeah, it's a good trade off.
And are we putting a curb on Freehold?
Well.
I differ with Ben, Ben, when you have a curb to nowhere, doesn't that potentially create a, a, a strange problem for the person without it?
Well. I'm just thinking about, uh, if you have the curb and the sidewalk on Chatham, and you run that curb, you just run it all the way around that corner lot, not the sidewalk. And it would just come into that, like, what do they have, like, the, what's that walking where it cuts the cur- where the curb goes down flat? And the presses out there. I mean, I guess you could have no curb coming from the other side, but.
Right, so you could, you could put curb, uh, on, on Freehold Road there. Um, if, there's no curb in the neighboring property and there's no curb across the street, so it's, like you said, it's not, it's not necessary to do it. Um, but it, cr- if, if, if that is the, you know, the desire of the board to kind of create a more polished look for the, the road, um, then, then that's, curb would, you know, installing curb would, would be the way to go.
I don't know if I could visualize how, how much polished, more polished it would look, you know what I mean, it's like, I mean, it's hard, hard to envision that, you know what I mean?
All right, so we could, I would like the curb on Freehold, so curb all the way around, sidewalk only on Chatham. Additional trees along Freehold. Working with Jim.
Yep.
To get as many trees as possible.
And saving those that.
Save what we can save.
Well, well, what would be, what would be appropriate to save if they're not under power lines and they're not?
Correct. Well, there's no power lines there in that back corner, and that's where all the trees are, oh, isn't it, right? Most of the trees are in that back corner.
Yeah, there's one or two trees along Freehold.
Right.
There's some in the back corner, which may be able to.
But we're gonna replace those anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else have any, uh, stipulations? Did we cover it all? All right, let's, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Based on the curb?
Based on the curb, the, I think, I think you have all the stuff, right?
You have to say it.
No, no, you don't have to say it.
I don't have to say it, no, he's got it.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be sidewalks and the curving, and those are your conditions.
So I was curving trees.
And the additional trees.
I, I got it all, yes.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonaventure?
Yes.
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 Congratulations.